My first order of business is to let people know that we have one counselor participating remotely. And that's Counsel Raybeck. And if there's no objection to that, I just have a couple of questions, Counsel Raybeck. And one, was it impractical for you to attend in person?
Yeah.
And is there anyone with you or are you alone?
I'm alone.
Okay, before we start, there's just one thing we'd like to go over. That we understand that public, members of the public may be attending by Zoom. Please, in an effort to minimize it, we ask all members of the public keep their microphones muted. And councils and staffs are encouraged to stay on mute when not speaking during the meeting. Additionally, we ask members of the public to turn off their video camera or webcam unless you intend to speak during the meeting. This will optimize the available network band for the meeting. For members of the public wishing to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please press star nine on your phone, press alt wire on your computer keyboard, or tap the raise hand button on your tablet. We will see your hand and prompt you to make your comment. It's requested, it is the council rules that public comment is no longer than three minutes. And public comment is not a back and forth between the counselors or any member or staff. This is a public meeting. If any disruption to the meeting that would not allow the meeting to continue, we will request that the chair temporarily recess the meeting so that the disruption may be addressed. We will then inform the chair that the meeting may continue. If the board is unable to continue the meeting due to disruption, the chair may elect to suspend the meeting to a later date or time to be noticed in accordance with state law. Once again, this meeting is being recorded. Following the meeting, a copy will be available on newmarketnh.gov.
Thank you. And we will start the meeting as always with the Pledge of Allegiance. So the first order of business tonight, we do have a couple outstanding committee assignments to discuss. And those were the Conservation Commission appointment and the Energy and Environment Committee appointment. I haven't heard from anybody over the course of the last couple of weeks. And I don't know if anyone has had a burning desire to volunteer for either of the. I will say. I will say that Counsel Raybeck has an unusually large.
It's not working, Kim.
Oh, it's not working? Thank you.
Can't hear you now.
Kim?
Yeah?
It's not working.
I'm turning up.
Okay.
Well, we got it.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now? Okay. So I will say that Counsel Raybeck has an unusually large committee load. And it's probably. It's unacceptable really to have that many, have, to be assigned to that many committees. So. The option really is. For, I suppose we could assign. Someone to the committee. One suggestion that I was going to make, because again, I'm not seeing anybody jump to it. And I know Counsel Conley, I know that, obviously, the Conservation Commission doesn't make sense. For you, for obvious reasons.
I think, didn't someone say it was against the law?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, but I wonder if the Energy and Environment Committee might? And then I could take over the conservation position.
We intended to connect on that, is that something we can connect on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, it's not on here.
Oh.
Counsel Kuiper, I apologize, it's not.
That was from before.
Oh, okay. Oh, I haven't seen it.
Sorry, yeah, that was from the prior meeting.
Okay. Do you guys want to, can somebody just test it? Zachary, thank you.
Just did it.
Came up on mine.
It's not on mine.
It seemed like there was a long delay during our previous meeting. Because I tried it.
I never saw it.
It popped up like 10 minutes after I canceled it.
Oh, you, oh, okay.
Yeah.
We'll look into it.
Okay, so until then, if you can raise your hand, please. Okay, so then the next item that we have is public forum. And is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? And we will also be having a public hearing on the ordinance, number seven. So this is aside from that ordinance. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
I've seen no comments from the remote participants.
Okay. Close the public forum at 7:12 PM and open the public hearings. We have a public hearing on ordinance, I'm pulling it up, give me just a second. Ordinance number seven, 2020, 2021. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, establishing licenses and permits for live shows and events. And this is the chance for the public to speak. And again, the three-minute rule is in effect here also. And this isn't where the, just so everyone knows, this is not where the council will deliberate. It's just a chance for the public to speak. So is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance number seven? And if you could state your name, please.
Thank you, Michael Hoffman from the Stone Church. And first off, I'd like to thank the council and the town administration for working so hard on this. I know that it's been a trying year for everybody. And we're trying to do our best to be good members of the community. We do feel we bring a lot to the community. We bring about a million dollars a year to the local economy and about $85,000 per year to direct payments towards state and local governments. This ordinance, I think, is for our outdoor shows. I think it's appropriate. It impacts a large area. We get a lot of positive comments, and as you know, we get some negative. I think that the only thing that we would like, we think is important for the outdoor shows, the indoor operations, I think, are a little bit different. And it could affect a lot of other restaurants, even little coffee shops that have a guitarist or picking up a harmonica, all sorts of different areas at unintended consequences for the indoor operations. So I think that there'll be a lot of people who will fall out of compliance unbeknownst to themselves just because they would think that practicing in your guitar, a guitar in your garage with a few people over, friends over, something of that sort could be considered to be outside, requiring a permit. So, thank you very much, I do appreciate it. We're certainly all on board with the idea of outdoor permitting, it just makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak to the ordinance? So, seeing none, and there's no one from the.
There is not.
Zoom. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:15. And the next item that we have is to accept the minutes. And we have one item, and that's from April 7th, 2021. And I would accept a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the April 7th, 2021 meeting.
I'll second that, thank you. Are there any questions or changes or comments? Seeing none, if you could call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Raybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you, the next we have is the report of the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize to the council for the lateness of my report. We had a lot of moving parts the last week with issues we've been dealing with. First, I just want to give a COVID-19 update. As of April 19th, we have 29 or 0.3% of the population active cases and 514 or 5% cumulative cases. Of these cases, 14% of the, were in institutional setting. So we are seeing a trend back down from where we were the spike of about a week or so ago. As of April 18th, 642,869 people are in the first dose of vaccination and 334,152 or 24.6% of the state is fully vaccinated. As you know, as of Monday, anybody, anywhere can get a vaccine in the state of Hampshire. Doesn't mean you can be from Massachusetts, you can be from Maine, you can be from Florida. It's open for everybody. So if you want a vaccine, you can get a vaccine. It's been that way for a few weeks, so it's rolling out even more. With that, on April 16th, Governor Sunu allowed the statewide mask mandate to lapse. However, our ordinance is still in effect until June 7th. With that being said, the emergency management team is reviewing the governor's statement that safer at home will be rescinded on May 7th. With that in mind, a local mandate for masks will be virtually impossible to enforce without actually make, could create some more contentious scenes. If we cannot reasonably enforce an ordinance, then we shouldn't, we should question its appropriateness. We feel if we're abs, if we, we feel that if we are substantially vaccinated by that point, then we should encourage social distancing and mask wearing for those who need it. Again, we'll be reviewing this more in the coming weeks. But ultimately, that's a council decision whether or not to rescind the mask ordinance. Again, this could also impact town operations. At that time or shortly after, what we'll probably be, end up doing is asking employees for copies of paychecks, which is legal, as the employer, we're allowed to see that. If they are vaccinated, employees will not have to wear a mask. If they are not, then they will have to continue wearing a mask. So it's almost the flip of what's going on. We'll have more information on this shortly as it's, you know, I know everybody paid a lot of attention to the mask mandate being rescinded. Safer at Home being rescinded on May 7th is a much bigger impact than the mask one. I'll just say it right now. Because that's going to change the way everything operates in the community. Not just town, not just, you know, private, it's everything. Just an update on the budget. At the end of March, we total, town expended 74% of the total operating budget, which is on track for the year, since we have 75% through the year. As a revenue, we are slightly higher above in several areas, including motor vehicle registrations. However, not surprisingly, we are slower in recreation due to the lack of program in this past year. We're also lower in building permits than we anticipated. To go with that, it is with mixed feelings that I must inform you that the building official, Mike Hoffman, has submitted his intent to retire to me effective August 1st. I had a conversation with him, and he wishes to enjoy his second retirement after retiring, this will be his second retirement after retiring from the Durham Fire Department where he served as deputy chief. I congratulate him publicly on achieving this. He's dedicated his life to public safety. He's earned an enormous amount for the community. One thing I would like to say is that I'm going to be asking for proposals that I think we need to look at the structure of what I'm going to refer to as the Community Development Department. It's been set up that way for much longer than I've been there. But I think it's time to look at, you know, do we have the right staffing levels? Do we have the right positions? I mean, is, are we spending more time on, on grants and those kind of items versus long-range planning? Are we have enough, is the caseload for the building inspector too much for a part-time individual? I know Mike has done above and beyond what a part-time individual would do. So I, I'm going to probably ask MRI for a proposal to review this and also look at just the staffing levels and what, what fits the right way. I think it's a, it's a good time to do that. Not in my written report, we did receive notice from the state Department of Transportation that Route 152 from the intersection of 108 to Grant Road is now under the control of the town. So we will now be maintaining that. It was a wish that we've had for a number of years. And we will continue to work on Main Street itself to get that turned over. And that is all I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you, are there any questions or comments for the town manager on either his report or? I am seeing none. I have so much to say. A few things. First of all, as far as the vaccine goes, I brought, I brought my, when I had my vaccine, it was in a smaller location. But I brought my 17-year-old to the site in Newington, and it was so well-run. It was really just amazing and a little, a little creepy, I won't lie, in the old Sears. Like it was kind of, you know, my son said, this feels like a movie. It's like a movie set, it felt like The Walking Dead a little bit. But the people couldn't have been nicer and, and it was just easy. We didn't have to wait other than the 15 minutes that you're required to wait. So it was just incredible.
Just to add to that, I had an opportunity this weekend. Spend some time with the, I don't know what his exact title is, but we'll go with Vaccination Czar. I think that's a, Perry Plummer, this weekend. And first thanked him for our local vaccination clinic, for all the teachers and staff. And then just commended on how well-run that everything has been. I mean, you're hearing so many hiccups in other states. And I have family in Maine, and it's just been difficult for them to get it. And New Hampshire, like I said, everybody who wants one can get one now.
It's incredible. And as far as the safer-at-home guidelines, I just, I guess I want to put this out there a little bit to the community that, you know, when we, when we voted to, we voted for the New Market mask mandate, the pushback, one of the things that I heard pretty often was that business owners can make their own choices. Property owners can make their own choices. They can, they can mandate, but the town shouldn't be able to, shouldn't be allowed to mandate. Government shouldn't, shouldn't be allowed to mandate such a thing. And I just hope that those people respect the wishes of the private business owners when they continue to ask their patrons to wear masks. And I hope that they do continue to ask their patrons to wear masks. So. Those are my comments about the safer at home. I'm still seeing no other, I'm just going to keep going. The department reports, I wanted to mention, I was so pleased to see that our fire chief, Rick Malaski, is working on a grant to finish the upstairs of the, of the fire station. We, we built that fire station, I looked back through our records because I couldn't remember, 16 years ago. And the upstairs has been unfinished since then. So I, I think one of the things that we learned with this pandemic was how important that, I mean, obviously, we know how important our first responders are, but how important the facility is and, and would be for, for those men and women who are out there as first responders. Not having showers or adequate facilities is a real problem. So I would like to see that that's at least a potential. And the last item that I had, obviously, Mike Hoffman, second retirement? But I, you're not really retiring, going to your third, third career. We just thank you so much for your, your, all the work that you've done in our community. And, and we know that you're going to continue to remain in the community and along with your family. So we just appreciate everything. We're going to have to start chaining people to their desks, though. And then my only other comment about that, Steve, is, is there any, I mean, obviously, I think going to MRI and getting your input would be helpful. But is there anything from the study that we had done that we can utilize in the short term?
That's, that's what I'm going to do, I'm going to look at the efficiency study. I'm basically going to ask for an update of just one department on that, for now. I may ask for updates on others in the future, but that one, I think, is, it's time.
One of the things, if, if people aren't familiar with that study, well, you should be, and I, and it's, one of the conclusions that MRI brought to us, and again, it's not a shock that we run really, really lean. We know that, we know that we have, we, we stretch our departments as thin as possible. And, and I think that some of that is going to come back to us now as we start to, to look at the options for the future. And that's all I had. So I'm seeing no other comments. I just have to get back to my, there we go, sorry. So committee reports, are there any committee reports tonight? Oh, Scott.
So that the planning board. And there were two issues. One is the Neo Mill Road, which is this Class 6 road that there's a, there's a private property buried within a conservation easement land, either from the Southeast Land Trust or private individuals who have taken the, the land into conservation easement. So the, someone wants to buy the private property, but they want to, you currently cannot drive to it. There is a, a Class 6 road which is closed to traffic. It's only available for snowmobiles in the wintertime. And it's become quite popular as a hiking trail and recreational area. And interestingly, we had this meeting the previous month, and the neighbors, the Southeast Land Trust and the other neighbor, were relatively supportive in the sense that they had met. with the people who wanted to buy the property, and they had obtained from them permission that they could then use the road, and they could maybe. But the last meeting, things changed. Southeast Land Trust came in, and they were lawyered up, and they came in with quite a strong argument that this is, should not be allowed, that they're now totally opposed to it. And again, we had a large, not as big as the previous one, but there were several members of the public, this seems to be quite an unpopular, or at least among certain people, an unpopular idea. They are proposing that they take part of this Class 6 road and they upgrade it, not from a class point of view, but they create basically a quarter-mile driveway, which is a road that will be owned, the road is literally owned by the town of New Market. They want to put in, you know, power lines and water lines, et cetera, so that they can build a single-family house. There's a number of issues with that, there's currently a gate that blocks the road, there's questions about, well, where is the gate going to be? If these people build this road, is there access, questions about, you know, what happens if they drive on it? There's very little parking in the area, so what happens if all of a sudden, everybody uses this road to park, so they can hike in the area? So there is a number of very technical questions, and these Planning Board meetings tend to be very technical. And the ultimate approval for this is with the town council, because the Class 6 roads specifically are meetings, are class states that you can't build a house on a Class 6 road. So they had proposed, then, rather than go through all the technical details, why don't we see if the town council will even approve it? So there was a suggestion made by that. The lawyers for the Southeast Land Trust were strongly opposed to it and brought up a number of arguments, and as a result, the Planning Board has sought legal opinion as to what they can do. Subsequently, legal opinion is that the Planning Board can basically do whatever they want. So I'm expecting next month, they will decide to bring it to the town council to see, because, you know, we as a council, I think it's reasonable, we as a council would have a very different opinion, I think, maybe opinion is the wrong word, we would have very different criteria to whether we want this than the Planning Board, which has very, very specific detail, you know, how high is this board, what about this boulder, what about this tree? And then, in addition to that, there is a, on the corner of Church Street and, the street that Stone Church is on, what's that called?
Granite.
Granite Street, on the corner of Granite and Church Street, there is a house that's been relatively recently renovated, maybe two years ago, and they built a, there was a barn there, they tore the barn down and they built a building there, and they now want to make that building into a bike shop. And so they've gone through, there's a lot of permits and everything that need to obtain, and they've obtained all the permits, and it looked to me like it's probably going to go through. There's a question about parking, and it's quite a small site, but they are currently working on detailed plans for it. So if that goes through, then we'll have another bike store in New Market, or maybe, I don't know what bike store it is, maybe it's the guys down in the mill, I'm not sure. That's it.
Great, thank you. Council Dumas.
I just wanted to say that the Budget Committee met Monday night. Mr. Lamatina is now going to be our vice chair, and Mike LaBranche, sorry, Joe Lamatina is going to be our chair, and Mike LaBranche is going to be the vice chair for the year. I think we may have somebody to fill one of the two remaining spots that we had had open, so we're hoping to get them in. Basically, there's been some good outreach from members on the current Budget Committee to make sure that we have enough people going into the budget season. I would say for the town manager, keep an eye out, there's probably going to be some requests for just updates as we get closer to the end of the year, and then probably at some point in the near future, another orientation session with department heads for Budget Committee members. But we do have a good group of people this year coming in, a lot of folks who are hanging on from last year, who are ready to get the process going, so I think it'll be a productive year for us again.
Great. The Arts and Tourism Committee met last night, we kind of had a wrap-up session for the Downtown Art Walk. We are hoping next year that the art will stay up longer, we may actually request that of the artists and the stores, that they leave it up for at least a ten-day period. Some of the art came down by the end of the weekend, so, and there were some disappointed people who went down to see it, and it was, some of it was already gone. Other than that, we have positive feedback on it, so it's definitely something we will do again. We will be assisting the New Market Rec with the Arts in the Park this summer. We're hoping that we may be able to have artists participate on the nights that there is arts in the park, so we're working on that. And the other thing is, we're trying to nail down our next project, and one of the things we're thinking about is a town mural. And the two locations we'd like to consider would be by the library, but we understand that is in native repair, so I need to figure out who we need to talk to to find out how much that's going to cost and when it could be done. And the second would be the Little Pocket Garden next to Johnny Boston's, the mural there that was done years and years ago by the LinkedIn, and might need a little refreshing. So those would be the two that we'd be thinking about. And we have one person who is now applying to be our seventh member, so we should be fully strength by May.
That's great news.
And thank you to all the businesses and all the artists who did participate this year.
Thank you. Council Dumas.
Yes, I just wanted to ask Councilors Andrews, did you guys get an estimate for roughly how many people were able to participate in the art walk that came into town, or?
No, we are going to be writing thank yous to the merchants and the artists, and trying to get some feedback for, did they see an increase in foot traffic, did they notice more people? So kind of get some feedback on how many people actually came.
Awesome. There were a lot of great photos, is what I was asking, but I appreciate it.
Thank you. Council Kuiper.
The Parking Committee met, and we discussed a lot of different parking enforcement technologies, some of which are apparently not legal in New Hampshire, so that was the main bulk of our discussion, was video camera enforcement apparently is not allowed.
I was such a downer that I mean.
Machine gun.
Yeah, so the town will not be under parking surveillance, at least not this year, but we're going to keep investigating some different things. Steve's going to set up a meeting, I think, with Dover, we're talking about to discuss how they enforce their parking limits, and, yeah, let's put it to where it is.
Great, thank you. Council Raybeck.
Thank you. The Ad hoc Riverfront Advisory Committee met again yesterday, no big updates since last time, we're starting to look more into the grant through DES, which we're hoping could be to hire someone to help with the plans of the living shoreline, climate adaptation for Shanda Park, and then a river walk. But the RFP is not out yet, but we were able to see, I believe, a 2020 RFP to get a sense of kind of what was done last year. So still a lot of questions that are being figured out, but some things that are kind of coming down the pipeline, we know that there's going to be, need to be some amount of funds matched, so we're starting to explore, okay, what are some options for coming up with those matching funds? And they will, I believe, the proposal requires some letters of support, and so we'll be looking for letters of support of the project.
Great, thank you. That's everything. Then moving on to old business, we have resolutions in the second reading, we have three this evening. The first is Resolution 2020-2021-40, and that is the purchase of a 2021 police SUV, line car three, and I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution 2020/2021-40.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And Lieutenant Jordan is here. Hi, thank you.
So we are here for Resolution 2020-2021-40. The Police Department is looking to purchase a new Ford utility police cruiser. The year is of 2021, and we're replacing it, 26,000, it currently has, I just checked tonight, it has 127,000 miles on it. We're trying to replace it with a new hybrid system, which we're hoping will save us some fuel, estimated by Ford, it's going to save potentially about 1,276 gallons of fuel a year, and that's about $3,500 that it could potentially save us. The reason for that is, police cruisers particularly spend a lot of time idling, where other vehicles may not idle as much, and most of the equipment in the police car will be able to run off the hybrid system, off the batteries as it is sitting there. Process that we went through to get bids for this, we went out to the state bid pricing for McFarland Ford for the purchase of the actual cruiser, and the price for that, when they came back, was $39,375. We sent some requests for outfitting the cruisers out to three different businesses, Ospey Mountain Electronics, Adamson Industries, and Two Way Communication, and that's for the outfitting of the police cruisers. Adamson decided that they did not want to respond to us, and we got two different quotes for this particular cruiser, one from Ospey, $1,795.22, and for Two Way Communications, they came back with a price of $11,722, and we have $500 in there for lettering up the vehicle. And currently, this 2006 Ford sport utility, as I said, it has, I checked tonight, it has 127,000 miles on it. We tend to keep these vehicles between four and 10 years, this one, we've had for five years, and it certainly has some wear and tear on it, and we recently, even though it says in some of the staff notes that we've spent about $4,400 on repairing it, we just additionally had to spend $1,800 to keep this vehicle running. So we are asking for a total of $51,647 to replace that police cruiser.
Thank you. Council Dumas.
Yes, thank you for being here tonight, I just had a couple of questions. The mock-up photos in the estimate look awesome, so I'm really excited to see it. You mentioned that this vehicle was a hybrid vehicle. I know most American-made vehicles have had an auto-off engine system from, I think, end of 2020, and I think it's mandatory as of 2020 moving forward. Do you have any vehicles in your fleet that currently have that feature? And then this is just one that now has a lithium-ion battery, as opposed to, you know, just cutting off the engine?
We currently don't, and I think the reason for that has been historically, the electronics system in the police cars draw so much power that, like, when you're sitting there, that a lot of times, the car needs to be running, whether that be the radio system, the light package, the computers, and other systems that run in the car. I think, if I'm understanding you correctly, just the vehicle that is not a hybrid, but the auto-off function, traditionally, those vehicles, the battery will die very quickly if we're sitting there with the car off, which is a lot of times why the officer will have the car running, you know, some people will wonder why it's running, but if it's left for any length of time with all those electronic systems going, it will kill the battery and we'll end up having to jump it, so.
Absolutely.
The difference here with this hybrid system is it has a much more significant battery system that can actually take a lot of the electronics that wouldn't normally on a traditional vehicle.
I like it. Do you mind if I follow?
Please.
I am curious, because your engines do idle for a while, and they do rack up mileage fairly quickly, concerns going in either about battery life or potential early wear and tear? Because, for example, this one has 127,000 miles on it, the vehicle that we're replacing, does Ford have any potential concerns with it being a police vehicle getting that significant wear and tear?
None that they've expressed, this is kind of relatively new, we've talked to a few different agencies, we talked to the Exeter Police Department, they just got one of these. They haven't noticed any concerns with either maintenance or any type of performance, in fact, they've said that it essentially seems like the same vehicle.
Fantastic.
We spoke to our mechanics that work on our vehicles, because we were concerned, is this going to be something that you can work on, and they felt confident, they work on hybrids all the time now, they work on some similar vehicles. It's my understanding, this is the first time Ford has presented this in a police package, which has additional things in it that wouldn't be in a normal civilian vehicle.
Awesome. I really appreciate you coming with so much information, and I really appreciate the fact that, once again, New Market is on kind of the leading edge of setting the trends, and who knows, maybe we'll start having more hybrid vehicles coming out in the fleets.
Council Blackstone.
I don't see any trade-in value here, what are we doing with the old vehicle?
So oftentimes, we'll send cruisers to different departments around if we feel like the cruiser is viable and can be used safely. We don't feel like this particular cruiser would be a viable option for someone else. We did just put $1,800 into it, and the mechanics told us that it's going to need some more work. So what happens in this instance is, this vehicle, and one I'm going to talk about in a few minutes, are going to go to state bid, state auction, where we have them brought to Concord, and people have opportunities to purchase the vehicle. And recently, we've got in the neighborhood from between $500 and $2,500 for vehicles that we've brought to that auction.
Oh, I see, so when you buy this thing to the state, there's no, like, trade-in value?
No, they're not going to take it from us. You know, recently, we've given one of our, the last year we got rid of a vehicle, we gave it to the Fire Department, it's not used as heavily as we do with the Police Department, so they can use it for some things there, that car still had some life left in it, this one certainly does not.
Okay.
Thank you. Council Raybeck.
Thanks, I think the raise your hand thing is not working.
No, it's not working.
Okay. I was looking at, and then the proposal for another car, and it looks like the, that fund for vehicles is going to be used, we're going to be using a lot of it if these two resolutions are passed, and so I'm curious, thinking about the rest of the fleet, are there any other cars in the next few years that you're concerned about having to replace as well?
I would suggest that we try to replace a car every year, and every few years, we replace three cars. It's my understanding that this particular fund, the capital improvement fund, we are going to deplete it, and we are going to be going through a different funding method for police cars and vehicles going forward.
If I can follow up on that. Yeah, when I first got here, we were taking money, putting money into the capital reserve fund and taking money out every year for new cruisers. It's hard to believe, but cruisers are more on the line of expendable equipment because of how quickly we go through them, so we moved it from being in the operating, from contributing to this capital reserve fund, to just placing, purchasing of a cruiser in the operating budget. So it's just an operations versus a capital project. Does that make sense?
If I may, I believe we started doing that two budget cycles ago.
Think so.
So you'd see the police cruiser expenditure line go up in the budget, but the contribution to the capital down, because we're expecting to buy three a year.
And there's a third fund that we could use, which is the Detail Fund, that we, if we make enough revenue off of doing details, we will withdraw money out of there every so often to purchase a second cruiser in a year or an additional vehicle.
I just want to say that I'm thrilled that we are making the leap to a hybrid vehicle. I had a conversation with Chief True recently, and I don't think that you cited this statistic tonight, but in a typical shift, an eight-hour shift, it's estimated, I think Ford did the estimate, that a cruiser spends about 4.9 hours idling, which is crazy to think about. And so the idea that we'll be saving that much fuel with a car like this, I just think that the implications for the environment and for the that the implications for the environment and for the future are huge. And so I really appreciate you guys looking into this. I know that it's been a little bit of a, it's a bit of a leap of faith, because I completely understand that. And I think that, you know, I've had some people say, well, why aren't we getting one of the Teslas? Which, I don't think, I don't think we're, but I also think, you know, we live in a, you know, we're in the Northeast, and we, you guys need four-wheel drive, and we just, we need that kind of capability. So.
I think this is kind of a new thing for police fleet vehicles as well. A few years ago, we researched, not here, but when I worked in Stratum, getting a Toyota Prius, and they said, not for police use. Anyway, I think this is, the hybrid is relatively new to, they've got it where they think that it can sustain the use of, for police work.
I think it's fantastic. So seeing no other questions or comments, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Dumas?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Raybeck?
Aye.
Counselor Kiper?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And the next resolution that we have, don't go anywhere, is Resolution 2020-2021-41. It's the purchase of a 2021 police Ford Expedition Command vehicle. And I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make a motion to accept Resolution 2020/2021-41.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Did you want to speak to that one?
Sure, I'm back.
Yeah.
So the police department is looking to replace a 2012 Ford Expedition. That vehicle currently has 57,515 miles. It probably has a few more today. That vehicle also has gone beyond its usefulness. The auto mechanics told us that it would probably not pass inspection going forward. It needs some significant work. It's quite old. We put this one out to state bid as well, and the state bid came back at $40,560. We, again, went to the three different agencies to outfit the police cruiser. And again, Adamson Industries did not come back with a price for us, but the other two did. There is a little discrepancy that I just picked up in the staff report compared to the actual report. The prices from Two Way Communication were $9,550. And Ospey Mountain came back at $11,637 for outfitting. In the staff report, it actually had the figures for the last cruiser. It's actually less money than is in the staff report. This vehicle does not have to be lettered, so it's considered an unmarked vehicle. So the total amount of money that it would cost us to purchase and outfit this vehicle is $50,110.
Counselor Dumas.
First, I want to say I'm genuinely surprised you've only spent five grand maintaining this 2012 vehicle. I was curious, since this is a different type of vehicle from your normal day-to-day use, do these crime scene vehicles experience the same level of wear and tear over time that your line cars do? Or is this like, just general, you know, nick scratch here or there, but because they're not idling all the time, I'm guessing?
Yeah, not nearly the abuse that a line car. A line car runs 20 hours a day, which is a lot for any vehicle. This particular vehicle is generally used by one person. The one that we're replacing was used by Chief Seer for a period of time, which is why the miles were pretty low on it. What we tend to see with these vehicles is, over time, just because they're so old, they're rusting and parts are decaying.
Yeah.
And because, I don't want to call it lack of use, but it's 10, 11 years old, and particularly, the rust is what the mechanics told us. They're like, unless we do it, we're not going to be able to pass this for inspection. This vehicle has relatively low miles for something, but it's being used by one person. It's being used not as often as a line vehicle, which is out patrolling the town. This particular vehicle is going to be used by Lieutenant Kokish. He is on the CERT team, and he uses that. He takes that vehicle with him often and has it in case he needs to respond directly to an emergency. He's generally the only person that uses this vehicle.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Dumas?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Raybeck?
Aye.
Counselor Kiper?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number seven, 2020-2021. It's an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, establishing licenses and permits for live shows and events. And I would accept a motion to approve that resolution.
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2020/2021, an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Code of the Town of Newmarket, New Hampshire, establishing licenses and permits for live shows and events.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Anybody? No?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, did you want to speak to that or?
I can. As the council knows, that we were asked to look into a noise ordinance, and the ordinance committee did so. While doing a noise ordinance, it came to the realization that if you put in a noise ordinance, it's a much more restrictive law, because you'd have a situation where, say if there was a wedding out in, or a reception out in a rural area, that wasn't really bothering anybody, but neighbor Jones just didn't like neighbor Smith, that noise ordinance could be used more as a tool for harm against each other than it would be for good. So the council, the committee asked me to look at what other items out there, and one of them is licensing and permits for live show and events. This is adopted by, in a number of communities in the area, including Summersworth, Dover, I believe Portsmouth has something similar, but may be incorrect. So what it does basically is RSA allows us to issue permits for soliciting funds for charitable purposes, erect banners, tag days, parades or processions, festivals, races, walkathons, public demonstrations, or protests on public property or highway, conducted carnival, bunch of things there, including live music shows, disc jockeys, any open-air meetings, karaoke, or amplified music event, which the public is invited for pay, movie theaters, and temporary closing of any street for the purpose of community-related private events, and any public dance or ball, which admission may be had by payment of a fee, or a public may gain admission without payment of a fee. So the reason why there's a number of these items, it's, way to explain this is, so first of all, for solicitation of funds for charitable purposes, the number of calls that we receive a year that are asking either us, the police department, the clerk's office of, hey, we just were asked to buy these tickets for this group. Is it legit? So what we would do is, we'd ask people if they're going to start doing a fundraiser in the community, file with us, so at least we know that it's out there. I mean, we already have the state law that requires people, if they're going to be doing raffles, they do have to get a permit. State law requires that. And this is just another reason to do that. I see us ever charging a fee for this, absolutely not. But that's part of what would be in here. Erect banners, that's because you're going over a public way. So you'd have to get permission from the municipality to go over a public way. Tag days, again, you just don't want somebody standing in front of a business downtown with a can asking for funds for not making sure it's a real nonprofit. I think the discussion of a parade or procession is pretty much, is understandable, because we'd have to shut down public ways. I know the public demonstration or protest, that's a question, you know, people are worried about the First Amendment rights. All we're asking is if that's a situation where it's a planned protest. That way, we can plan as well to make sure the public is safe and those protesting is safe. We did that during the Black Lives Matter situation. The police worked with the individuals wanting to hold the protest, so we made sure we had a safe environment. Again, I don't see anybody, I mean, if you denied it outright, I think it'd be a situation of a First Amendment issue, so I don't see that happening. And again, that's on public property or highway. If it's on private property, we have no say. Conduction of a carnival, tent show, fair, circus, because that's going to be an impact. Open-air public meeting, live music shows, disc jockey. One of the reasons why municipalities do license those are to ensure the safety of the people attending, that we know that their live show is there, and that they have enough security, they have the right number of people who can attend. Examples of the bad side of that would be the Warwick Island Fire, where they didn't have the right inspections before a concert, and we all knew the tragic of the 100 people who died at that concert. So that's one of the reasons why we have licensing permits for events like that. Also, noise. So we can, if there's like an open-air public meeting, that we could say, hey, guys, yeah, you can have your open-air public meeting, but can't be at 2:00 in the morning. So right now, there's nothing that says they can't have one at 2:00 in the morning, except the fact that police can come in and say, you're being disruptive. Movie theater, again, goes, because it's a large facility, that we just want to make sure people are safe. When you have a movie theater full of, and we're not having any right now that I know of, but if, say, if you have a movie theater filled with 500 people, and we didn't inspect that annually, and, again, there could be issues in there that permitting and licenses are needed, we're concerned about the safety, that we have somebody looking at it at all times. On the street, you got to get permission from us anyways. We already do that, as well as for, I could tell you, like, for the road races, they meet with us all the time. And I'm trying to think, what's the other one? I believe that's all of them. So the next item is, how do we do that? Well, somebody would have to apply, and then there would be a licensing board that would review it, which is very, again, common, and is set by state statute. And that licensing board is, can we take that out?
No, it's in their purpose.
Oh, thank you.
129.
It's at the beginning. Yeah, the licensing board would be the council chair, the chief of police, and the town manager or their designee. That's set by statute of who's be serving on there. So all they would do is, whenever there was a permit, they would convene a meeting, they would review it, usually probably get input from the department heads to make sure it complies with safety factors, and then issue them. I know there's something about fees, and I know a lot of concerns about nonprofits. I do not, would not recommend at any point in time that we charge a nonprofit a fee for a permit. It's just an opportunity for us to ensure safety and, you know, some review of what their operations. And that is, I think I've hit everything.
I know that people probably have a lot of questions or comments about this, and I just want to, and I don't, we can take them all, but I do want to let the council know that I have an amendment to offer to this ordinance, and I just wanted to, let me just pull it up, sorry. And then I will go ahead and we can take comments on the amendment, and then vote on the amendment before we vote on the ordinance. So the amendment that I'm offering, it's under Section 130, Number 5, and I, just to give a little background, so I served on the ordinance committee, and after we met, and we've gotten a lot of feedback, I'm sure everyone has received the emails that we've gotten about, in particular, you know, about outdoor concerts, and then also in relation to this ordinance in particular. So giving that a lot of thought, and just kind of thinking about what this ordinance is trying to address, I absolutely think that the majority of items on that list that our town manager just read are important for us to regulate. We need to know if people are going to host a demonstration in downtown. We need to know if banners are going to be erected. And I think that we need to know if there are going to be outdoor concerts that can affect neighbors. What I don't think that we need are, to regulate, is the indoor performances, because I do, I, it's sort of, if it's not broke, why are we trying to fix it? And I understand the point of view of, we need to get inside and make sure that buildings are safe, but I think that that's why we have a building inspector and health officer, to make sure that those things are already happening. So my language is just to change that section so that it's really focused on the outdoor piece. And so it's conducted carnival, tent show, fair, circus, public dance, maybe that should say outdoor public dance, dance exhibition or demonstration, or any open-air public meeting. And then I would change outdoor live music shows, including disc jockey, karaoke, and other amplified outdoor music event, in which the public is.
Just for wordsmithing, if you move public, if you do outdoor live music shows, move public dance, when you say including disc jockey, public dance, that would work to make, that's an outdoor event.
So that's the amendment that I would suggest, and so I'll make a motion, I guess, to add to that amendment.
Can I ask a question about that amendment?
Yes.
You need a second first.
First, we need a second. We have to go through the process. Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So now.
So would that mean, like, a public dance would also have to be outside to require a permit?
Yes.
Okay. And we can sell the circuses, right?
Still have circuses.
Only in the Pocket Park, though.
Yeah. That was it, about the amendment, yeah.
Counselor Dumas?
Yes, I just wanted to speak in support of this amendment. When the ordinance committee met, it was a question of, how can we best tailor this to the environment that we have here in Newmarket? And obviously, Newmarket not having done this before, it was hard to account for every single situation that we could think of. Today, we got a lot of helpful letters from the Stone Church. We got a lot of helpful letters from the community to help us kind of reorient exactly how we can get this so it was appropriate. So I do support our chair's amendment, and I do hope that it passes, because I do think that it makes the ordinance better and altogether more acceptable for the community.
Counselor Blackstone?
Just as an example, before the pandemic, once a month, on a Sunday at Crack Skulls, there's a community group of artists who get together to kind of talk about where they're going and to help each other out. And it frequently results in someone playing music. And, but they don't know if it's going to be there, you know, if someone's going to play music, but it usually does. And so in this case, they would have needed a permit to do that. And it's just a spontaneous thing.
Right.
Right.
I think you're speaking in support of the amendment.
Yeah.
Did you, yeah, counsel?
I just have a question about a few of these solicit funds for charitable purposes. I mean, you got people doing GoFundMes all the time. Would they need a permit to do that?
I don't believe so, because it's not actually being done in Newmarket.
But they could still be taking money in Newmarket.
The businesses, and you're doing it out there, so we don't have any say over that.
Okay. How is the town going to know that the charitable organization is legit?
We do not when it comes to GoFund...
I mean, any organization.
Oh, we would ask for documents, 501(c)(3)'s, or, you know, some way we know that it's going to go, because you're right, at the end of the day, it may not go right, and we've seen that in the news, that, you know, sadly, there are people out there who use tragic events and do bad things with it. But at least we can say, look, this is what they presented to us. And maybe that would stop them or try to figure out if they can, if they build a case that heavy, that they probably wouldn't want to build a case that heavy to do that. It really does give an opportunity for them to register somewhere in the municipality that, hey, I'm legit, I'm going to be asking for funds publicly in Newmarket, and we can say, okay, yep, no, we checked with them, we talked with them, it's a go.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I get tons of requests for donations to the restaurants. Some are just preschools, some are high school groups, some are, you know, they're all... Some are just preschools, some are high school groups, some are, you know, they're all over the gambit. And like, to think that these people might get like arrested for not having the permit that they know about seems for that.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody's going to get arrested.
I just, I guess I'm questioning.
If we're going, if we're going deep, I mean, this is somebody who's doing something nefarious.
If there are already state RSAs that would be making them, they're already conducting something illegal. So I guess, I just, I feel like that doesn't have anything to do with the, like, live music and. So I would just suggest maybe making amendment. Altogether.
But I believe on the, in the RSA, it's already included in there.
Okay.
That it's, it's a blanket, the licensing board has authority over blanket items.
Okay, so all of these we have to accept?
Correct.
Okay, so I.
I'll double check, let me double check, but, um, and again, I, I would not, I think that's a, it's a legit item to. If somebody comes in and says, hey, you know, asks up for a donation, we're not going to go arrest somebody for, um, requesting it. We're going to say, hey, is that a legitimate thing? Fine, here's your permit.
I guess I'm just skeptical of making ordinances that we really can't enforce anyway. And like, you know, I mean.
But we can.
Point of order. I'm sorry, I believe discussion has to be to the.
Right.
The amendment. And I don't discount your line of questioning, but I don't think that it's appropriate for this amendment specifically on this language.
Oh, we're still talking about.
We're still. Just the amendment.
Okay, so I'm just suggesting that maybe another amendment to remove, but you're saying that that's.
Don't amend an amendment.
Okay, so we need to go to that amendment, okay.
I, I appreciate where you're coming from. I didn't want to get off track.
Yeah, I know, I, I hear you. I understand, yeah.
Counselor Baybeck, did you, no?
Uh, I wanted to comment on what Counselor Kiper was discussing, so I will wait until.
Okay. Thank you. So I'm not. Discussion, um, and, well, I guess my question though, to the town manager is can we change? If, if all of those items are prescribed by RSA.
Let me double check.
Okay.
Counselor.
Can I just ask a really quick clarifying question?
Sure.
So is the spirit of this amendment to make it so that only outdoor things would need a permit? And any event that people wanted to have indoors would, would not?
Exactly.
Okay.
You can remove that.
We can.
Yes.
The solicitation.
Yep. Just remind that, that that does not remove the raffle permits. That's still, that's state law.
All right, so. Let's do one at a time, yes. But, and then we can change this.
Correct.
Okay. So as, since it's legal, uh, I'm seeing no other comments, so if you could call the roll on the amendment.
Counselor Duvall?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Baybeck?
Aye.
Counselor Kiper?
Aye.
Counselor Burn, uh, excuse me, Conley?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. And now, Counselor Kiper, did you want to make another amendment?
Yeah, um, I'd like to make amendment to, you know, just strike number one. Also like to make, should I, should I, should this be separate amendments? I've got a couple.
Is it germ, is it the same topic or is it?
Well, I mean, it's a different number.
Is it still doing raising funds?
Uh, no, I just wanted to talk about erecting banners, but should we have it as a separate?
Okay, no, that'd be a separate one.
Yeah, I think we should just remove soliciting funds for charitable purposes because I think that probably enough enforcement on that, on the higher level. And I've been, yeah, skeptical of having more permitting in a world of pending permits.
I second that.
Thank you. Counselor Duvall.
I agree with you about cutting down on bureaucracy. Um, I do however, um, wanted to get the town manager's opinion. Because the town manager did make reference to the number of phone calls that they received throughout the year at the town and at the police station regarding whether or not organizations are legitimate or not, people going door to door. Does, would that affect what we can do by not having this?
I mean, I would recommend that any agency out there wants to, um, so as it funds, they should contact the police first. So, I mean, we can just do it as an advocacy, but if somebody comes up, we can't vouch for them.
Do you think that it's a net negative by removing this?
No.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Counselor Baybeck has a question.
I mean, oh, Counselor Baybeck, thank you.
Yeah, the question I was going to ask before was going to be, um, about the way it's written now. Would it, would it require that you were a registered five oh one C three nonprofit organization in order to raise?
No, I'm sorry, we, no, it doesn't say five oh one C three. So you could be soliciting fun, you know, to be quite honest.
Not to be raising funds for, uh, memorial funds.
Right.
Who was in town who died or something like that.
Right. But much like we do with any charitable thing, we do investigate prior to endorsing it in the community. Because we want to make sure that it is going to a, a good cause or not a good, not, not, let me rephrase that. It's not a place to determine what a good cause is, but a reputable cause. Legitimate, thank you.
And we've had that situation in recent years anyway. Like I've seen, I, I know I've seen it posted on Facebook, um, by the police department, you know, or, or people will ask, you know, this person came to my door and, and, um, we know that it's legitimate. So, and that has happened. And I think that that's really what it's more about, i- in my opinion, is that those people who go door to door. Because that does happen where people will go door to door praying on the elderly or, um, on people who just. And I, the other piece of that is I've seen people get very defensive of, of their home. Like they're shocked when someone comes to their door, um, and.
The chief would like to wear an actor.
Oh, yeah. Chief, if you would like to, please, I, you know better than us, you know, opining up here about.
We still, you still on the amendment?
Yeah.
Yes.
So with regards to solicitation, by getting a permit would give legitimacy to the person who is, um, soliciting. So when you get a phone call or, and someone's soliciting money and they call, you, and you decide to call us and ask, we can say, yes, that is a legitimate fundraising event. So that's my two cents on the amendment, but I would like to speak to you about it as, as you, before you vote on this, on this.
On the ordinance.
Yes, thanks.
Would the, so would it apply, the, the solicitation to, you know, I'm helping out the PTA and I'm going door to door to businesses, it would apply to that as well?
Yeah, you're just, you're right. But that's, that makes it legit because you, the business downtown doesn't know that that is a legitimate solicitation. He knows that it's a legitimate one and they go to the police and register, they all have to just pick up and say, yeah, we know, yep, it's legit. Versus, you know, Mary Smith down the street walking into a store saying, yeah, I'm soliciting to the PTA and then walks out.
Counselor Baybeck has a question.
Even if we don't have a permitting process, is there anything stopping these organizations from calling the town or the police and just giving them a head?
No, and that's what we would, we encourage that to everybody. If you are soliciting funds in this community, please call the town or call the police department before you go doing so. So we can at least know you're doing it. If this, if this is not to go in.
Counselor Kiper.
I just want to say, you know, from my personal experience, six years I've run a business, I've got probably individually hundreds of solicitations for donations. All of which, a hundred percent of which, I can tell you was an organization that I knew, you know, whether it be a preschool, a high school sports program. And if it was one that I wasn't sure about, um, it would have taken me a couple phone calls. And I'm sure, I would love to be able to say no to these people because they don't have permit. Like, I just, I'm just wondering, you know, do we, do we want to make charities have to go through another hoop to get money? I mean, especially now where most of it is going online anyway. The, you know, the few people that come to my door and are asking for money are frequently, um, you know, people that aren't very good at technology or for whatever reason, it's usually like some young kids raise money for their football team or, and sometimes they're from, you know, Newmarket. But sometimes it's like a Newmarket Epping team or there's a couple of sports teams that are Portsmouth with Newmarket kids on them, cycling teams and stuff. And I just, um, you know, it just seems like one more hoop to put these people through that are not like frequently getting paid, you know?
As someone who's often asking for those donations, I will say it's also a lot harder for the business owners to say no when you're there face to face.
One other item too, in the municipal association provides a lot of guidance specific to RSA two eighty-six, which is, authorizes you as a board to create this ordinance. And you can put it in your ordinance that you only have to apply for this once a year and your permit will last all year. And it'll, so it's not like every time that they want to solicit funds, they have to go and reapply. They can apply once a year. And, and you determine the application process.
So for example, if you knew the Boy Scouts are going to do twelve fundraisers throughout the year, we give them one permit and say, this is when they're going to do it.
Sure.
Much like the raffle.
Right.
Is, is there a, um, is there a problem like with this? Like, are we seeing sort of, you know, like rampant solicitors kind of prowling the neighborhoods and, and accosting people and frightening people? Such that this, like, is there, is there a problem that this is, this particular line item is intended to solve in this moment?
You want to?
Well, we, a lot of times we, we, we have a peddler's permit that, uh, magazine salespeople would have to, have to get. Occasionally, we do get people who just come into town and will, uh, that are not legitimate, but, uh, claim to be legitimate. And they do scam and they target our elderly, they target our seniors. Um, and I would, I would say that probably ninety percent of all of our fraud cases, um, that are scam artists are targeting senior citizens right now. Whether it's telephonically or whether it's, uh, uh, an email, um, telling them that they won the lottery. We, we're not going to be able to prevent that. But what we can do is we can provide some legitimacy to those people who are actually, um, soliciting funds legitimately. And when our seniors call and say, does the Steve Fornier Foundation, is that a legitimate foundation? We can say, yes, they're registered with us. They're a legitimate foundation.
Madam Chair. I, I did want to. Counselor Conley and for the other counselors here, um, when the ordinance committee discussed a licensing board, we didn't specifically go line by line for every single item that we think would be super helpful because there was a significant problem in the community. We used the text that was in the statute that was general recommendation for, that stuff that the licensing board could encompass, but not necessarily because there was a significant rampant problem in the community already. So when you do look through the rest of these, I mean, it's not like we're, we're looking at any, we're not freaking out about carnivals. We're not freaking out about tent shows, but we use the language that was recommended in the ordinance, in the statutes.
Rope dancing, I don't even know what that is.
Right. Counselor Kiper.
I, I think for that reason, we kind of have to go through this line by line because a lot of this just doesn't really apply to our town, I think. I mean, in that one, you're like, as you just said, the majority of the complaints are the fraud with the elderly is electronic. Like, there's very few people knocking.
Madam Chair, and for, since you do have a nine o'clock deadline, would I, I would recommend that if this is that big of an issue, that you send it back to committee.
Do we need a?
You can hold it, if you want, if you can meet. You can hold it for third reading. Um, if it's a substantial, uh, changes to this ordinance, you would have to repost it, withdraw this one. Um, do the, do the whole public hearing process again.
Point of order, I think Counselor Kiper had a pending motion to amend on the floor still. So.
True.
We may need to either withdraw or.
Motion to table is always above everything else, so you could just motion to table.
That works.
Can I make a motion to table?
You can. Is there a second?
It's non-debatable.
Oh.
After you, so, so somebody seconds it. So just before you do that, make sure, if any questions are out there.
Cause I've got a lot of stuff on this.
I have a question. Would we be able, because I have a few issues too with the way it's written here. Um, and I would not vote for it tonight, the way it's written. So can we, would, who would be the contact person for John and I and anyone else with, with issues to get in touch with and say, these are my concerns?
I would give it to myself or to the chair of the ordinance committee. However, I would not have a majority of the town council at any ordinance committee meeting.
Correct.
And that's a violation of the right to know law.
Right.
So the chair or myself.
Okay.
I would ask that you send.
That's why I was asking what's the appropriate way to, so either Zachary or Steve would be who we would address those.
I would send it to both.
Yeah.
Zachary and Steve.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, thank you. Then I will second the motion to table.
Non-debatable.
Then it is done. Oh, we need to vote, yes, sorry. If you could call the roll, please. Counselor Duvall?
Aye.
Counselor Sanders?
Aye.
Counselor Blackstone?
Aye.
Counselor Baybeck?
Aye.
Counselor Kiper?
Aye.
Counselor Conley?
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you.
Just for the, since I know there's, uh, some interested parties here. My concern, if we do not address this and May seventh comes and all emergency orders are out the window, then that means what the governor has set up for outdoor dining goes out the window. And those events that we're going to have to look at on a case by case basis. So I think we have a meeting before, but we cannot continue. A lot of what we've been doing this past year is done through emergency order. So I've got to, we've got to look into that and what the impact will be is if all of a sudden they say, gone. Like, that's, that's how we got the authority to do a lot of those items is with, through the emergency orders.
So I just have a question about that.
Yeah.
So, for example, Portsmouth has outdoor dining all over the, their streak.
Theirs councils agreed to allow it. They, they already extended theirs in the streets. We don't have anything, this was the attempt to extend it. Because they actually, they have the, they already have the thing in place to do licensing board, that kind of situation. I could, I look at my authority as town manager, I could do an emergency order. Um, which I could say this is an emergency because of economic hardship. It does, I, I can determine that one, but it's just one of those situations.
Counselor Sanders, please.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, maybe I'm not reading between the lines, but what in here would allow outside dining?
No, I'm sorry, let me, and I said outside dining, I meant outside events.
Oh, okay.
But outside dining.
I don't understand.
We have, it, a lot of the regulations for outside dining are lax because of the pandemic.
Okay.
This removes that. I mean, if the governor gets rid of it.
Right.
We're going to look at it and see what we can still do, but the live entertainment will be a big part of it because we'd have to go by what zone, you know, what's right and, I just want to double check. But that, that's my concern. That's why we're trying to get it done quickly. Because we knew this was going to come from the governor soon. And this was one way to regulate it during this time. We thought it was going to be Memorial Day, but it looks like it's going to be May seventh from everything he's saying. But we can, we can still meet and we can, I think we have a meeting before the seventh, so.
Could we agree to stay after nine o'clock and just finish it now?
All right. I, I think you're going to get in the weeds on this. I think it's better to go through a committee.
I agree.
What's the town manager? Uh, sorry, she said we had a meeting before when, May seventh?
No, that's when the governor, the emergency orders go away.
Yes.
We have one the fifth.
Okay, so you want an, an ordinance meeting before the fifth?
Correct.
Got it.
And comments before the fifth and wrap it up.
So one more question that I have, so we have arts in the park. So we have, and we have outdoor entertainment.
That's a government entity. We don't have to license ourselves. We don't have, we don't, we don't have to comply with the ordinances. Counselor Kiper has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
Um, just, I'm sorry, going back to the emergency order. Um, so I guess I'm a little confused because I don't, there was no prior license necessary to perform music outside.
We didn't have large concert venues outside like this.
Okay, Stone Church used to do it for.
Used to do it? That was, no, they did get one for that because that was a special festival. And who, we would just write something, they would reply, we'd say, yeah, go for it. There was no real formal process. This is because they want to do extending dates.
So can we make an emergency amendment to extend their permit till?
There, there is no permit on this. This is just because of the.
Can you issue a permit at?
We issued a letter, but we only have the authority as of time as the governor has given us this. We're still in pandemic, the, you know, the businesses get out there, do as much as you can. If it falls apart, I've got to look at what my authority is, as I've been issuing some emergency orders as the town manager because I have that authority. If I can do it, I'll do it. But again, the other reason why we're doing this, because if you remember, there was individual. But again, the other reason why we're doing this, because if you remember, there was individuals personally attacking me in this position because I was giving a permit. And I wanted to have oversight of my position to do this, and this is a way to do it. I will continue to do it, but I just want to make sure I also, personally, I have support.
The, the big thing behind setting up a licensing board was to give some sort of framework that people could look to and understand, you know, why things are allowed, how they're allowed, the process that they go through, without one person getting all of the flak for it because of, of an emergency situation during a pandemic.
The emails that we, I was receiving were pretty hate, against my reputation, saying I was doing it because of friendships or because of connections or, and that, and if those have known me in the eight years that I've been in the town of Newmarket, that doesn't fly with me. And I, and I take it personally offensive, and that's part, part of the reason why we were, I was looking for another board to oversee this. I have no problem doing it, and I will continue to do it because I know I'm doing the right thing. But I just, this is the reason why we're doing this, but I just wanted to continue support.
Counsel Kuiper.
I guess my, my, I just didn't want to react quickly to, we're in a pandemic situation. I didn't want to react quickly with a boilerplate ordinance that, you know, didn't necessarily reflect what we need or have in Newmarket or want. And so, I mean, I guess that this, you know, the May 7th date is, you know, was thrown out there rather quickly on all of us, obviously. So when is our next meeting? Is the?
May 5th.
The 5th, okay, so we will have a meeting before 7.
Can I make, can I just remember something? The vote at the table, right? And this can, this is supposed to be done.
Yeah.
Right. Well, we're not talking about the, the ordinance really, we're talking about the process.
Process is, we can do it, if, if we can do it by the 5th, we can. If not, I'll extend it. Just, I just want, that if I get emails, that, because I mean, again, if, I don't, I think most of you saw them, and I just don't want to give you the one that always falls on this situation, then we were trying to set up a process, so.
And I think we'll get there.
Yeah.
We, you know, just have to, I, I agree with Counsel Kuiper in that we don't want a knee jerk reaction to, because this is an ordinance that's gonna live on well past the pandemic. And, and so I think we need to be really thoughtful about it. And so, and it's absolutely okay. And I know these are different circumstances, but I just say this in general, it's absolutely okay for us to hold items and get more information about this, about, about any resolution that we need more information about. I think that that's more than appropriate, and it's, and it's what we should be doing if we don't feel that we have the right, the right information that we need, so. Moving on. We have one appointment this evening, and that is.
Thank you.
Thank you. For Bruce Fielding, and it's for a housing authority commissioner. And I would accept a motion to approve that appointment.
I will make a motion to approve, sorry, I'm loading it, Bruce Fielding to the, is it housing?
Housing Authority.
The Newmarket Housing Authority Commissioner.
I will second that.
Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, if you can call the roll, please.
Counsel Dumont?
Aye.
Counsel Sanders?
Aye.
Counsel Blackstone?
Aye.
Counsel Braybeck?
Aye.
Counsel Kuiper?
Aye.
Counsel Conley?
Aye.
Counsel Weinstein?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. And then we have three resolutions in the first reading tonight. Um, the first is Resolution 2020-2021-43, it's the increase of water and sewer rate. Whereas water and sewer rates shall be determined by the town council from time to time in amounts that will adequately cover the costs of operation, maintenance and repair of existing infrastructure, and also for reasonable extensions and replacements to existing mains and toward acquisition of future water supply, plant and equipment. And whereas the town of Newmarket has major improvements to the wastewater treatment facility and has begun major improvements to infrastructure and needs to raise additional income to cover the capital improvement cost. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council does hereby approve the following water rates to be effective for the August 2021 quarterly billing. Water and sewer users will be billed $6.25, $6.25, and $12.65 per 100 cubic feet of water consumed respectively, first reading April 21, 2021. The next item is Resolution Number 2021-44, new system development connection fee. Whereas the town would like to change from its current water and sewer impact fees system to a new system development, to a new system development charge connection fee system. And whereas Wright Pierce is the town's current engineer of record and has provided the town a cost proposal of $16,000 to complete the project. And whereas the funds for the project will come out of the water and sewer budgets. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that the town council approve the change to the new system development charge connection fee and authorize Wright Pierce to perform the work for a budget sum of $16,000. Last resolution is Resolution 2020-2021-45, water treatment plant integration programming services. Whereas the water department is constructing a new water treatment facility to remove arsenic. And whereas the integration programming services was not included in the contract. And whereas the integration programming services work will be subcontracted directly through Wright Pierce with zero markups at a cost of $55,804. And whereas Wright Pierce will handle receipt and processing of subcontractor invoices and oversight of the contractor work at no additional charge. Now therefore be it resolved by the Newmarket Town Council that authorize the town manager to enter into agreement with Wright Pierce to amend the water treatment plant construction administration contract by the sum of $55,804 to include integration programming services, first reading April 21, 2021. And correspond to the town council, there were two items that were, two groups of letters that were listed and.
You all received them previously, so I don't know if you need to read them in the record. We can play some of the record, but don't need to be read.
Right. And, and just for the general public, there were a few others that were received after the, the packet is put together. And so I imagine those would be put in the next packet. In case people were wondering why their letters were not included.
Yeah, just so, for the public's, usually when we read it, it's because we received one copy. And that's why we read it out loud so we make sure every council, these were all distributed to the council via email, but we place it in the record, so it's part of the right to know law that you did receive it.
And then are there any closing comments? The town council, or is it Counsel Dumont? Oh, sorry. Counsel Braybeck, sorry.
Counsel Dumont can go first.
Thank you. Members of the Ordinance Oversight Committee, please make yourself available sometime next week, either on the 27th or the 28th. I will email you sometime tonight, so there's a reminder. If you guys just want to get back to me which day works better, we'll do another Zoom meeting.
Should we meet in person or is Zoom okay?
You can do Zoom still.
We'll do another Zoom meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Braybeck?
Yeah, I just wanted to say two things. The thing I wanted to say was just regarding the conversation around potentially, you know, that, that we've been looking at the, the police budget and how the, the vehicle funds come through, and that kind of got me thinking. So I just wanted to make the statement that I appreciate how frugal our town is and the departments are in our town, that we do a lot with a little. And I also hope that as we move forward, we can explore the possibility of shifting funds potentially from departments like police towards more social services. I also wanted to just state, through this whole ordinance process, I really appreciate how vocal our town is and that we've gotten to hear from a lot of people, and how discerning are my fellow counselors were today and being really thoughtful in, in passing legislation.
Thank you. Counsel Kuiper.
I just want to say thank you to everyone who has been, you know, it's been a long, strange year plus. And, you know, all the neighbors of the Stone Church, many have supported, many have been having some issues with the sound. And I just want to say thank you for your patience, you know, keeping the Stone Church open. You know, what's important to me, it's only bits I've gone really to eat in the last year and a half or so. And I know it's probably loud if you live in those first houses right near it, and I just appreciate your patience that, I mean, not only is there ten or so people staying in business and some people keeping their shop open, but there's musicians that are in there playing and getting paid, who, many of whom have not been making very much money, you know, over the last year. And I think that, you know, that is, is an important aspect to all this. And I just want to say thank you to the community as a whole for, you know, being flexible during this strange time. And hopefully we're almost through it. And I appreciate everyone that, you know, continues to wear masks. You know, I feel like no one really changed their behavior after the, the governor's, you know, the mask ordinance. And everyone's been very supportive, and I feel that, you know, this will be over soon. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just had one quick item, and that is the Newmarket Conservation Commission has been sponsoring a, this whole week, a cleanup of the roadways. And they've picked up, they've been posting it on social media, I don't know the exact numbers of, of trash bags that they've picked up, but it's, it's been really phenomenal to see people, I think for the most part, in their own neighborhoods, trash. So that's been phenomenal. And we're, I'm sponsoring a cleanup on Sunday from 12 to 4. And we're working together with the, with the Conservation Commission to make sure that we're not, you know, overlapping and, and that we hit as many roads as possible. We have a record number of volunteers so far. It's also, I think, a hundred percent chance of rain on Sunday, so we'll see what happens. But really, I'm blown away by the people who have already, because I don't even ask for signups. I just say, you know, kind of come, come over that day. But the Boy Scouts are involved and high school groups, and so we're gonna have, like I said, a record number. I think it's looking like 30 to 40 volunteers on Sunday, assuming that it doesn't pour. So, but it's on rain or shine, and we've had, you know, the support of the, of the DPW and the police and the town, and it's been really fantastic. So if you have an hour, if you have 15 minutes, if you have four hours and you don't mind getting a little wet, come down to town hall, we're gonna have the bags and goodies and, and I'll, I'll assign you to a road, so. Seeing no other, I will consider us adjourned. Thank you.